Going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing. Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Chairman Bone. Here. Item three additions, deletions, changes to the agenda, items A through C.
Mister Chair, I move that the agenda be amended with the following additions. Under new business, resolution fifteen dash sixty, reverse scholarship fund as, I guess, AA at the end of Z.
Yep.
And to the consent agenda, F and G, one, the interagency agreement with CMH for public guardian services and childcare fund budget amendment.
We're going to make those AA, BB, and CC.
No, they would be under consent.
Oh, two of them are going to consent. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, very good.
It'd be under consent.
You got a support and then a second. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval agenda?
Move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes previous meeting.
Motion support. Or motion to make a motion for eleven nineteen fifteen and twelve three fifteen minutes. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Item seven on consent agenda, items A through G.
Mister Chairman, I would move at this time to approve the consent agenda, items seven A through seven G.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item eight, reports standing, special committees, Mister Greatop.
I had something last week and I forgot it, and I still have it this week and I forgot it, so.
That's what happens when you get old. Mr. Dunn?
Nothing to pay.
Nothing to pay.
Mister McConnell?
Dunn.
Hydeman?
Good evening, Mister Chairman.
Coward? I'm going to take a pass. Citizens wishing to address the board, any citizens at this time? Seeing none. Item ten, unfinished business, none. Item eleven, actually, I'm going to take items A through H, all one motion, they're all contracts, came before us last weekend, just ratifying them, we're going to do a roll call on those, please.
A through H is it?
A through H, correct.
I would make a motion that we approve items A through H.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item I, the meeting schedule, two thousand sixteen.
Mister Chairman, I move that we adopt the two thousand sixteen Board of Commission meeting schedule as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item J, the boards and commission reappointments.
I would make a motion that we move to approve the Board of Commission reappointments as presented.
Support.
Discussion on any of these at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item K, the Michigan municipal risks renewal for the insurance.
Chairman, at this time, I move to renew the policy with MMRMA for a term of one one sixteen through twelve thirty one sixteen in the amount of seven hundred eighty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars. Support.
Discussion on it at all? They've been our insurance carrier for a long, long time, and we've actually been on a couple of different occasions that I've been on the board and they've come back a little bit or, you know, those whole times, so. Roll call.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item L, the resolution fifteen forty-two.
Mister Chair, I move the adoption of resolution fifteen dash forty-two relative to the per diems for boards and commissions.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item M, resolution fifteen forty-three.
Mister Chairman, I move that we adopt resolution fifteen forty-three waiving investment interest earned on taxes collected by local units of government.
Support.
Discussion. Pretty standard stuff. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item N, resolution fifteen forty-four.
Chairman Bone, I move to adopt resolution fifteen forty-four establishing salaries of specific county elected and non-elected officers for two thousand sixteen.
I'll support that, including the clerk.
Thank you. Howard Coward, you want to whack us pay twenty percent? Oh, we got him here.
I already signed off on it, so it's too late.
Old Emaneese.
Did we have a second?
We do.
My only comment is, this, for elected officials, there's no increase in pay for county commissioners, so we can only do it on the election year, so.
Okay, Howard.
We have to wait till two thousand sixteen.
Everybody in the county gets a two percent raise except the county commissioners.
Yeah.
Sounds fair.
I know.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item fifteen, resolution fifteen forty-five.
I make a motion to adopt resolution fifteen forty-five approving annual wage adjustments for the county association of non-union employees.
Second.
Discussion. You know, one of the things, another little history lesson here, it was on this board at times where canoe, we're getting one raise and then the union folks were getting another, you know, the numbers, remember Howard went there and then we had a lot of encroachment issues and so we addressed a lot of the wage and grade stuff back early on in the tenure, but I think if you look today, we're very consistent in, you know, if we do something for one, we do it for everybody across the board, so, just my little two cents. Roll call.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item Q.
P.
Item Q. P. P. Yeah. Establishing compensation for the road commission. Who has P?
I have P, if you're ready for it.
Yeah, ready for it.
All right. Move at this time to adopt resolution fifteen forty-six establishing compensation to be paid to members of the St. Clair County Road Commission. Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item Q, the Broadart AV Plan two thousand sixteen.
Mister Chairman, I move that we approve the audiovisual audiobook subscription with Broadart for a term of January first, two thousand sixteen, through December thirty first, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of six thousand eighty-one dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item R, the Broadart book plan for sixteen.
Mister Chairman, I had moved to approve the hardcover books subscription with Broadart Company for a term of January first, two thousand sixteen, through December thirty first, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of forty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item S, the purchase of the CBRNE vessel for the dive team.
Chairman Bone, I would move to approve the agreement with Precision Weld Custom Boats for the purchase of a CBRNE vessel for the dive team in the amount of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Support.
Second.
Discussion. Wayne.
Wayne.
Merry Christmas.
For a call.
We all want to go for a ride.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item T, the two thousand sixteen brownfield assessment grant application.
Mister Chair, I move the approval of the Metropolitan Committee Commission request to submit a brownfield assessment grant application in the amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. U, the two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty capital improvement program.
Mister Chairman, at this time, I would move to approve the two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty capital improvement program as, program as presented.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item B, the wetland interpretive walkway coastal zone management grant application.
Mister Chair, I move the approval of park and recreation requests to apply for coastal zone management grant for the construction of an interpretive walkway in the amount of fifty thousand dollars with a fifty thousand dollar match provided by the park and recreation millage.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item W, resolution fifteen forty-seven.
Mister Chairman, at this time, I would move to adopt resolution fifteen forty-seven adopting two thousand sixteen special revenue funds budgets and the amending of the two thousand fifteen general and special revenue funds budgets. Support.
Discussion.
Could you repeat that real quick for me again? We're at such a roll. This is a word during a roll.
Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item X, resolution fifteen fifty-seven.
Mister Chairman, I move that we adopt resolution fifteen fifty-seven ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the Professional Nurses Association.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Um, Z.
Y.
Y. Or Y, I'm sorry, fifteen fifty-eight.
Chairman Bone, I move to adopt resolution fifteen fifty-eight ratifying collective bargaining agreement with the Family Division Supervisors Association.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item Z, resolution fifteen fifty-eight.
Mister Chairman, I would move to adopt resolution fifteen fifty-nine approving the senior millage appropriation.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item AA, the resolution fifteen sixty.
I would move the approval of resolution fifteen sixty, the reverse scholarship fund.
Support.
Discussion.
This is, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you want to talk?
Just briefly, this is just kind of a redo, we already did this once, but the wording was a little bit off in what the attorneys on each side needed, and so we came back and the two attorneys got together, redecided, and we're just reaffirming what we already reaffirmed.
Okay.
There was a note in the, I believe it was in Crane's, there was an article about, about this particular item.
It's the only one in the state of Michigan or the country?
I think there's the first, at least, in this.
Michigan, for sure.
One of the, one of the first in the country, yes. It's really kind of an economic development type of a piece, I don't know if you know anything about it or not, but, you know, kids come out of school with a huge debt, you know, you give them money to go to college, when they come out of school, they've got this huge debt, and they're getting ready to move all kinds of places, and if you can convince them to move back into your area, bring their debt with them, and then help them pay off that debt, then they stay here, they work here, maybe they start a business here, you know, Bill Gates type of business, or whatever it might be, you're always hoping for something like that, but that's the idea behind the reverse scholarships.
And it's totally funded by the community foundation, too, just another little footnote on that, so. Uh, all, actually, roll call.
Commissioner Tomlin.
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes. Item twelve, the administrator's report.
There's a, I have a few things to report on, a couple items I just want to bring to your attention that were, that was in the consent agreement, one was a six-month review of the changes that we made in how we deal with maintaining, repairing our existing fleet of vehicles and equipment, if you get a moment, certainly take some time to review that, the bottom line is, we've changed where we can bring vehicles and equipment to be repaired, you remember, we went exclusively to first vehicle a couple of years ago, we made some changes, there's a number of other local vendors that we are currently going to, so, when we sit down and we compare what we've done in the first six months of that program to the, to that same time period in previous years, we see that what we've been able to do is at least contain costs, we are not seeing our repair maintenance costs going up, however, we have identified there are some opportunities to perhaps cut our costs a little bit, we don't expect that we're going to see significant savings, but we believe that what we will see is at least a containment of our expenses for the next couple of years as we go through, get a little bit more familiar, a little more disciplined on where we take vehicles for certain types of service to take advantage of the opportunities that exist, so take a look at that if you get a chance, it's always nice to go back and review how effective has some of the changes been that you've made, so this is, was an opportunity to do so. The other thing that you'll notice there is a letter from SEMCOG to the EPA supporting a project that the county has been involved with, a special permit of research development and demonstration project permit through the EPA, and that is for the bioreactor out at the landfill, one of the concerns we've had for a number of years is there is a limit on the number of years that that permit can exist, one of our engineers who has been assisting us is sitting on a committee, an advisory committee for the EPA in Washington, DC, that committee has forwarded some recommendations to the EPA that will change the length of time that a permit can be granted for, and that would benefit us significantly in our project, I'm sure it benefits other projects across the county as well, SEMCOG sent a letter of support for that change to the EPA, our landfill staff and engineers are drawing up a letter of support as well that we will be posting with the EPA, as soon as we know whether or not those changes have been implemented, these are administrative changes that the EPA will put in place, once we know, we will certainly let you keep you apprised. Over the last couple of weeks, we've had our insurance company that insures the airport come out to the facility, MMRMA does not insure the airport, it's not a business that they're in, so we have a specialty insurance company that we deal with, we had them come in, take a look at the facility and our operation, you know, we've made a lot of changes out there, some of the assets that we've gained as part of those changes, we needed those, that insurance company to take a look at, there are a couple of minor changes we needed to make to some of our facilities, building and ground out there this week, addressing some of those concerns, and we will be addressing others as we go along, but they're very, very minor. We have a group from Muskegon that will be coming to town tomorrow to take a look at the convention center, they are a group of local elected officials, both from the city of Muskegon as well as from the county, some private sector investors from Muskegon as well, taking a look at our facility, they want to hear the story, why didn't we do it, how did we do it, and what are we seeing occur, the, they are looking at building some type of a convention center over in Muskegon, one of the questions I was asked was, well, will you kindly meet with us, we realize that you may want, not want to meet with someone who could be a competitor.
Tell them it's the worst decision we ever made.
I'll tell them.
You don't want to do it.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll be spending some time with them tomorrow, sharing the story, SMG will be there as well to talk about what they've experienced over the last eight months that they've been there, the Convention and Visitors Bureau will be there as well to share their story, their perspective, so, we'll let you know how that, how that goes. We did have a meeting with our investor from the convention center project earlier this week, primarily just to talk about operational issues, kind of a year in, how have we done, what's outstanding, what do we need to get moving before the, the weather does close in on us, thankfully, we've had some good weather, and what do we plan on doing in the, in the next couple of quarters for two thousand sixteen, so, it was a good meeting, a lot of information was exchanged, there continues to be some staffing changes up there on the private sector side, again, the cooperation just seems to, every month it gets a little bit better, a little bit smoother, and everyone is beginning to understand their roles up there, so it was a good meeting and it was nice to kind of do a wrap-up for the end of the year.
Just want to couple back on that, I know I talked to a couple of commissioners about this, Convention and Visitors Bureau approved an attraction fund for the convention facility to, basically, it's a mechanism to help attract conventions to come to the area, it's, a lot of the other convention facilities have it, Marcy had been working on it quite some time, they don't have a hundred percent of the specifics worked out on it yet, but I give the CVB is their, you know, essentially a partner in this, with us, that they're stepping up and that they're going to, to, you know, put that thing in place to, to help bring additional business here, and I think it's, if you ask the CVB, it is the one, it is the main thing that they're going to push and really, you know, make some stuff happen, so.
Yes. Just wanted to add into what Bill was just saying, if I may, I took the opportunity to talk about how well they're working together, I took the opportunity to sit in on one of their weekly meetings the other day, and they had people from the hotel there, they had people there from the restaurant, including the chef, all the people that worked there, the front people, they had people from SMG there, I sat in, and there was a room full of people, there had to be ten or twelve in there, and they had the whole list of everything for December, there must have been twenty different, twenty-five different events on this list, and they went down that list one at a time, and whoever was responsible for that, be it SMG, or Convention and Visitors Bureau, or the hotel, or the restaurant people, they talked about what they had, what they needed for that project, I'm going to need this, I've got it, I'll have it ready for you, I mean, they talked around this table for probably a good hour about all of the projects that were going on for that month of December, and they do this on a regular basis, and I was very happy to hear them talking in such a way as everybody was working together and pulling in the same direction, it made you feel good, because when we originally put this together, who was going to bring in and who was going to handle all of the people, and at that table that day, they were all working together, and it's working very seamlessly and very smoothly, so, if it keeps up, I think we're in really good shape.
Thank you. The agenda tonight included the adoption of a number of special revenue budgets also, it included year-end budget adjustments, over the next couple of months, as all of the bills come in for two thousand and fourteen, Carrie and her staff will be taking a look at how we believe that we ended the year, right now, we think we're going to end the year with a little bit of a fund balance that we can add to the general fund, not much, but a little, I certainly want to take this time to thank the elected officials that run departments, the department heads, our collective bargaining agreements, or organizations, everybody's really pulled together this year, the budget, the amount of budget discipline that exists within this organization now is really unbelievable, given the challenges that we've had over the last couple of years, but everybody is working together very, very well, and as a result, you saw tonight, there were relatively few adjustments that needed to be made to the budget, and in spite of a tough year, a challenging year, we think that we're going to end on the positive side. The, I have.
Just as a side note on that.
Sure.
Constituents have to understand that, you know, they see their property values going up, they have to understand, though, the amount of revenue that we get from property tax is fixed at, at cost of living, or five percent, whichever is least, so, even if their home goes up in value ten percent, we're, we're not going to be getting a whole lot of revenue, and, and so, it'll be, I think, about two thousand and twenty-something before we get back to getting the revenue we got in two thousand and eight, so, there's going to be struggles for the next few years budgetarily.
The medical examiner's office and administration has been meeting with McLaren, as most of you realize, we have a medical examiner's office, and facilities are located in McLaren Hospital, they're undergoing a major capital investment as well as renovations of some of their existing facilities, it will impact the medical examiner's office, and they've been very, very open and honest with us on how we're going to proceed, it's clear to me that they are committed to keeping those offices within the walls of McLaren, and they're certainly advantageous to us as well as to the hospital for us to be there, this was just another opportunity to talk about what is their timeline, what is it that they can expect from us, what they will be looking for from, from us, at this point, it looks like it will be a number of years yet before they get to renovating the space like it will be a number of years yet before they get to renovating the space that the medical examiner is in, that gives us plenty of time to be estimating what the cost may be, to help work with them to design the new footprint, and to work the costs that we will incur into our budget and into our capital improvement plan, so you'll be seeing more of that throughout 2016 as that information becomes available. Our wetland bank is now listed on the DNR's website of wetland banks that are available to be contacted, unfortunately, we still can't sell credits, we have applied to the state for the ability to sell up to 50% of the credits that are available at the bank, once they are approved, then we can start accepting requests to purchase credits out at our land bank, that's out, if you recall, that's out at Puttygut Road, and I forget the road, the north-south road, but this is a project that's been going on for, geez, 10 years?
14 years.
14 years, long, long time, so, finally, it is looking like it's all coming together, so, we see that as a great benefit, not only to the county as an organization, but certainly to the community as a whole, people that come to the community, wanna develop, and they wanna use the facility to mitigate wetlands that they may need to mitigate, they could certainly come to us, use that bank, and we can realize some return on our expenses to build the facility. That, is it?
Any questions for Mr. Kaufman at all? Motion to receive and file the administrator's report.
Still moved.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Any miscellaneous business to come before us this evening, just a little reflection, I guess, on the year, two new commissioners, that's not in norm, you know, pre-non-election, would you come in, March, April?
I'm.
Right in March, Duke?
Last month.
Last month, so, welcome aboard, guys, and then this year, we saw the convention center, you know, whole year of that big project, and a lot of good things in store, so onward and upward. Seated and filed?
Motion to receive and file packets that were sent to commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information presented.
Support?
All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman?
Motion.
Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
I hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda, and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.